My name is Mike Hickey. I'm a project manager with Donahue and Associates. I would like to call the public hearing to order. I'm going to read an opening statement. This public hearing is being held to solicit public comments on the Hammond Sanitary District's long-term control plan for controlling combined sewer overflows as required by U.S. EPA. The meeting will begin with a short presentation about CSOs and HSD's actions to date, and the recommended alternative or CSO control, followed by a question and comment session. I would also like to read the notice of public hearing. This was published on July 30th and August 6th, 2019. Purpose: The Hammond Sanitary District will be holding a final public hearing to seek public input prior to the anticipated submission of the long-term control plan for combined sewer overflow to the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. Topics: Topics to be discussed include general information about long-term control planning, water quality, and the recommended alternative for CSO control. A summary of the district's CSO LTCP is available online at HammondSD.com. When: August 28, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. Central Daylight Time. Where: Hammond Sanitary District, 5143 Columbia Ave., Hammond, Indiana. Contact: For any questions, please contact Mike Hickey at 312-236-9147. Public comments will be accepted up to 15 business days following the public hearing and can be submitted to the district at the address above. That's the end of the notice. This long-term control plan to mitigate CSOs is a revision to HSD plan submitted to U.S. EPA and IDAM on March 1, 2018. Public hearings for the prior LTCP have been held on October 27, 2011, May 8, 2015, and February 20, 2018. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the proposed revisions to the LTCP since the submission on March 1, 2018. The revised LTCP is being submitted pursuant to a consent decree with U.S. EPA and IDAM approved by the Federal Court for the Northern District of Indiana on May 9, 2017, which requires that the revised LTCP be filed by September 30, 2019. The revised plan is subject to approval by U.S. EPA and IDA. So that's my opening statement. Just a few introductions. I'm Mike Hickey with Donahue and Associates. Assisting me today will be Steve Stickland, also with Donahue. I'd like to introduce Marty Wilgus, the district manager with the Hammond Sanitary District, Jeff Massey, the plant superintendent, Matt Mudda, assistant district manager, and Mike Hawkins, commissioner. So with that, we'll get started with the slideshow. So this is the long-term control plan public hearing. And I want to start by just giving an introduction, a background of the previous public hearings and meetings. So on October 27, 2011, we introduced the public to the planning process. On July 10, 2012, at a HSD board meeting, we introduced various long-term control plan alternatives. On May 8, 2015, we had a public hearing and we discussed preliminary recommendations. About 18 months ago, on February 20, 2018, we presented the recommended CSO control plan alternative. And today, we're going to talk about the revised recommended CSO control alternative. So I'm going to give a brief presentation, the outline, and I'm going to turn it over to Steve. So we're going to talk about what is a long-term control plan. We're going to talk about the history of the long-term control plan for Hammond. We're going to discuss improvements to date, the current status of the long-term control plan, and what's next. Turn it over to you, Steve.
All right. A little background on what exactly is combined sewer overflow. Now, there are generally three categories of sewer systems. First is a sanitary sewer system, which, as its name implies, collects just sewage, sanitary waste from homes and businesses, and conveys it to the wastewater treatment. The other type, dominant type of sewers are storm sewers, which convey runoff from streets and buildings and such, but just storm runoff from rainfall directly to receiving streams. And then finally, are combined sewer systems that exist in older communities, which convey a mixture of both sanitary sewage and storm runoff. So to better illustrate these two different types of systems, I have these graphics. So on the left side is a combined sewer system, and on the right is a separate sewer system. So as you'll note, I'll say on the right, in the separate sewer system, there's a separate storm sewer that conveys runoff from the street directly to the receiving stream. In dry weather, of course, there's nothing in that pipe. And then there's a sanitary sewer that takes waste from buildings and such and conveys it to the wastewater treatment plant. The left is a combined sewer. As you'll know, there's just one pipe that conveys both, although there's no storm runoff at the moment, so all the sewage is just going directly to the treatment plant. However, you'll note there's a dam or an overflow structure here near the receiving stream. Now, in wet weather, these two types of systems behave very differently. The separate sewer system, the sanitary sewage continues to go directly to the treatment plant for treatment, and the storm runoff goes directly to the receiving stream. The combined sewer system, both the sanitary sewage and the storm runoff go into the same pipe, and some of that flow goes to treatment plant, but much of it exceeds the capacity of the interceptor sewer and the treatment plant, and therefore is diverted directly to the receiving stream, mixture of storm runoff and sewage. Now, there are a lot of options, and one might not, one of the most logical questions might be, well, why not simply separate the sewers? Which is an approach to alleviating combined sewer overflows, which obviously have negative environmental consequences. And this illustration kind of shows one of the challenges with separating older combined sewer systems. So typically, that's done by constructing a new storm sewer to convey the storm water to the receiving stream while retaining the old combined sewer for sanitary sewage. However, these older systems often have a lot of cracks and leaks and the joints and so on and so forth, so storm water can still make its way into what is now a separate sanitary sewer and can still contribute to overload in the system and what are actually now called sanitary sewer overflows, which are technically not allowed. So other problems with separating sewers is it's very disruptive. You have to tear up all the streets to put in new storm lines. It's also very expensive, and as I mentioned, the problem with ongoing inflow and infiltration of the sanitary sewer could contribute to other environmental challenges. So I want to give a few stats and facts about Hammond's wastewater treatment plant capacity. In dry weather flow, the treatment plant receives, on average, over the course of a year, about 36 million gallons per day, or MGD. The peak rated capacity of the plant is 68 MGD, although it can take higher than that in some instances. In the plan, we're evaluating a number of alternatives that may include increasing plant capacity up to 140 MGD potentially. If you put that into some perspective, during a storm, the collection system can easily receive 1.4 billion gallons per day, or 1,400 MGD of wet weather flow, which obviously exceeds the capacity of the treatment plant. So all this flow up here would have to be diverted to the receiving streams. Right now, roughly half of Hammond's sewer system is currently served by combined sewers. This map kind of delineates Hammond's service area. The yellow areas are served by separate sanitary and storm sewers, while the pink areas are served by combined sewers. Since the beginning of the long-term control planning process, HSD has completed some projects to mitigate CSOs, including separating some areas down here near Munster, near the Little Calumet River, south of the Little Calumet River. So in 2011, there were 17, a total of 17 combined sewer overflow points where the sewers could bypass combined sewer directly to the receiving streams. It's these purple dots that you see. In 2015, that was reduced to about nine through a couple of projects. A large 33 million gallon storage basin was constructed across the street from the plant here to capture the CSO that had been discharged from three outfalls along the Grand Calumet River. And also, the sewer separation projects I mentioned earlier eliminated several overflows into Scoon Ditch and one to Little Calumet River. So what is a long-term control plan? Well, first, these little black dots show that the locations of combined sewer overflow communities. There are about 772 of them in the U.S., and most of these are facing very similar challenges to the Hammond Sanitary District. Now, to reduce the pollution that combined sewer overflow is caused, the EPA issue was called the CSO control policy, which mandates that cities develop a long-term control plan to figure out how to mitigate combined sewer overflows. So what are the key elements of this policy? Well, first and foremost, the objective is, of course, to protect human health and the environment from the effects, negative consequences environmentally of combined sewer overflow. Recognizing that these can be incredibly expensive endeavors, EPA has provided some financial flexibility in terms of how communities fund these projects. And part of that allows for a phased approach that is constructing the CSO control projects over time as the community can afford. And also, there is, there can be a process of reviewing water quality standards as a project moves along and as is appropriate. So the goal, overarching goals and objectives of the LTCP, as quoted in the CSO policy, is to ensure that all CSO discharges comply with the technology-based and water-quality-based requirements of the Clean Water Act. Now, that's kind of broken down into two sort of different fundamental approaches and how that's done, as, that is, EPA has focused more on a financial approach, meaning that communities should do, implement as much CSO control as they can afford. IDAM, on the other hand, has taken more of a technical approach to the CSO planning, that is, you know, design projects that will meet the design storm criteria from a technical standpoint. I think everyone can agree ultimately what we want is clean water and better health for the community. And IDAM's ultimate goal is to basically make every body of water in the state of Indiana suitable for fishing and swimming.
So I want to talk a little bit now about the history of the long-term control planning process of Hammond. So Hammond originally submitted its long-term control plan to IDAM in 1997. IDAM performed a completeness review in 2003, and negotiation of the terms of the plan with EPA and IDAM began in 2004. HSD continued to use the 1997 document as a roadmap for CSO reduction. This 1997 document was a very robust document, so there was a lot of good info in there, and we can, Hammond continued to use that document. Hammond submitted a revised plan in June of 2015. We received comments from IDAM and EPA on that plan, and EPA requested that Hammond evaluate further improvements. About 18 months ago, HSD submitted an updated long-term control plan on March 1, 2018. Similarly, we have received comments from IDAM and EPA, and based on those comments, we're revising the selected alternatives, and the plan is to submit this updated long-term control plan on September 30 of this year. So the long-term control plan lays out a strategy to reduce, treat, and/or eliminate CSOs. The long-term control plan consists of three main engineering phases. The system characterization phase, and at the end of that phase, we held a public hearing. There's a development and evaluation of alternatives, and at the end of that phase, we held a public hearing. And we're now in the selection and implementation phase, and we've already had two public hearings prior to today, and this is the third public hearing on that phase. So going to go a little chronology of recently submitted long-term control plans. So in June 2015, we submitted a long-term control plan. There were four alternatives we looked at: sewer separation, store and treat, transport, store and treat, and NPD-16, which is a variation of store and treat. So we'll go over this briefly. The first slide here shows the current system configuration, very similar what Steve talked about. The red are separate areas, and the blue are combined, and it's about 55 combined and 45% separated. So the first alternative we looked at was sewer separation. If you did that, you know, the entire area would be red, it would be completely separated. But, you know, Steve talked about the disruption required to put in new storm sewers, so you'd be tearing up a lot of streets. And Steve also talked about infiltration and inflow. And when you do a sewer separation project, it's almost like you're doing two projects. You're doing a separation project, putting in new storm sewers, but you also have to add in infrastructure to transport and convey the infiltration inflow, and that's big pipes that are deep, and just, it's very expensive. And so, the cost for that alternative came out to $482 million. Second alternative we looked at was store and treat. And what we've done here, and I'll talk about this throughout the presentation, we divided Hammond into four quadrants: northwest, northeast, southwest, southeast. And this alternative looked at putting storage basins in each quadrant, and their various sizes: 41, 10, 10, and 5. And this ended up being a lot cheaper than the separation. I want to say in 2015, when we sized these basin, it was for four overflows per year in this alternative. Third alternative we looked at was convey and treat, and it's similar to store and treat, but instead of having four remote basins, we had one basin at the plant, and then we were going to construct infrastructure to pump all the flow from the remote areas to this basin. And this ended up being more expensive than the basins, because it just costs a lot of money to transport it. And then the final alternative we looked at was this NPD-16, which, NPD-16, it's a non-policy rule document by IDAM, and it gives you a design storm. You have a storm that you can design the size of these basins. So the basin sizes are a little smaller than alternative 2. In this instance, all the flow would go to the basins, and any overflow from the basins would go to the receiving stream, but it would receive some treatment from flowing through the basin. And once again, these overflowed four times during a typical year, and the cost of this was similar to, it was a little cheaper because the basins were a little smaller. So that's what was submitted in 2015, and this is just a summary, present worth costs of the four alternatives. And present worth is combination of capital and O and M. And the least cost alternative was alternative 4.1, NPD-16, at $192 million, so that's what was recommended to EPA. However, as I stated earlier, we had a series of meetings with EPA, and they asked Hammond to evaluate reducing the frequency of discharges from the four per year to one and two. So that was the work that was done between submission of the plan in 2015, a series of meetings, and we resubmitted the plan 18 months ago in March of 2018. So we certainly, we added to the four we looked at, and we've added a couple alternatives and what was recommended in that plan was a combination of NPD-16 and end-of-pipe treatment. Talk about that next. So the first thing EPA asked us to look at was, you know, so what we had presented in June of 2015 was four overflows a year. They asked us, what would it take to get down to one overflow a year? Well, what happens, the basins get much larger. It was 33 at the plant, you know, now it's 50. This one got a little bigger, but the Indy was 10 million gallons before. It became 52 million, and Jackson got much bigger. And one of the criteria is you need to de-water these basins in two days. So the plant had to get much bigger so that you could de-water these basins in two days. In any case, it was very expensive to go to one overflow a year using basins. We also looked at what we called alternative 6, was kind of a combination of alternatives 3 and 4. It was basically just having one basin and doing some additional separation and then transporting all the flow to the plant, and then you'd have to increase the plant dramatically to be able to de-water it in time. And that was even more expensive than going to larger basins. So we were introduced to a technology called CMDF, cloth media filtered disc technology, and we took a look at that at the Kennedy Ejector and Indianapolis area. If you remember from a previous slide, this basin got huge. Previously, it was 10 million gallons large when there was four overflows a year. But to get down to one overflow per year, this basin ended up being sized at 52 million, and it would take up too much room, be too expensive. So we looked at cloth media disc filters, and we'll talk about that a little more later. And by doing that, it saved about $50 million in capital costs. So we started, we came up with a new alternative, and this is the basis of presentation today. What if we use cloth media disc filters in lieu of, excuse me, in lieu of basins? And so, the recommended plan is now is have cloth media disc filters down in the Indy, Kennedy Ejector area as before, but also, we're going to put one at the Kennedy North, and more importantly, we're going to put one at the plant. And this allows us to keep the basin size at 33 million. We don't need to increase the plant capacity, and it ends up being a much cheaper alternative than previously submitted in March of, it's cheaper than what was submitted previously. So this is a summary of the alternatives, and the least cost is alternative 8, which is $253. Now, alternatives 4, that's four overflows a year, so that's something that EPA wasn't going to accept. So we had to get down to one overflow a year, and the least cost is this alternative 8. Just a kind of a summary. So I told you we broke it into four quadrants. The old alternative 4 was four discharges a year. With the new alternative 8, there will only be one discharge per year. In the northeast and southeast quadrants, this is where we're going to put cloth media disc filters. The old way was the basin was going to overflow four times a year in both basins. With the new alternative, there will be 15 discharges a year, but this will be almost like treated effluent from a wastewater treatment plant. There will be very, very clean effluent going to the river, and the load of solids going to the river will be much less than it was with the previous alternative. And then southwest quadrant, the old 2015 plan was four discharges. This area, we plan on separating, so it'll be zero discharges.
So this cloth media disc filter technology is kind of innovative approach for end-of-pipe treatment of combined sewer overflows. It's not entirely new, it's been around for a while, primarily for use as what's called tertiary treatment at treatment plants, similar to the way sand filters function. But these are cloth discs. So I'll show a video, it animates better how these operate, but basically, you've got like these 10-foot diameter discs that sit on a shaft or a center tube. Then there's this filter media, which you can kind of see a better picture over here, this blue stuff. It almost looks like, when you look at closely, it almost looks like shag carpeting. But basically, it's just a filter. Water passes through it, and it has like five micron pores through which the solids cannot pass and are trapped on the surface and then collected and sent back to the plant for treatment. So I'd like to run a kind of an animation to better illustrate how that happens. I have to get up for a second.
Sure.
I've got to get some time off my laptop. Video. Okay, so this is a combined, this is a cloth media disc filter. So the dirty water comes into the influent tube, into like a channel of sorts, overtops a weir, into the filter chamber, and the water level's up here. So these discs are always submerged. You can see the particulates here and the clean water passing through the disc, you know, center tube, out of an effluent chamber, over another weir, out, and this goes, this charges to the receiving stream. So filtration mode, this is the backwash chain. So when the backwash kicks on, happens is these discs rotate, this shoe sort of acts like a vacuum, which I'll show you here in a second, collecting this, moving the solids that collect on the surface of the discs. So clean water from inside the disc, so the dirty water goes past the sewer disc to the interior of the disc, which is then used to flush the dirt, the solids off disc. All that dirty water, concentrated solids is collected to a pump, which then send that back to the treatment plant for final removal. Some solids will settle to the bottom of the unit in these sort of hoppers. Those solids also are removed, pumped back to the center of the treatment plant for Wastewater often has a lot of floatables, grease and all kinds of other nasty stuff that collects on the surface of the water. Since these are submerged discs, that is a different mechanism to be removed, so there's what's called a scum trough. All that floatable material is also removed, skimmed off, and sent to the treatment plant for final removal and disposal. So this is basically a relatively new application of a fairly old, established technology. The genius of these devices is their simplicity. They operate in almost automated mode, very little manpower is required, very little maintenance is required. So these are some of the benefits of this technology as opposed to what Mike discussed before, that is, as opposed to storing combined sewer overflow basins. First of all, Mike mentioned, they're much smaller. These have a relatively small footprint as compared to a equivalent storage basin. As I mentioned, they're very simple to operate, maintain. Not having all that combined sewage sitting in an open basin reduces odor issues and problems. And very importantly, they provide more consistent and reliable capture and treatment of pollutants. Basin, storage basin, once it's full, provides some amount of treatment, but it's fairly limited, and any additional water that goes into the basin once full, in most part, pass through it and discharges to the receiving stream, whereas a CMDF will always provide some level of treatment. So EPA requested that Hammond do some pilot testing of this technology to demonstrate that it will meet the performance criteria that we anticipated. So over several months, HSD performed this pilot testing. This image is a picture of the building that was constructed to house a pilot CMDF unit. This is kind of, it's a little hard to see, in the foreground there is the control panel for the CMDF, which is behind the panel there. This is kind of looking down at the filtration chamber. So the disc is currently filtering, and it's submerged there, and you can see the drive chain from the back, rotating the disc for backwashing. This is where we performed some chemical feed. We ran some pilot with some chemical feed to see how that enhanced performance. And there were samplers on both the influent and effluent side of the pilot unit to quantify the removal efficiency of the pilot. So these are the results of the 12 wet weather events that were, that were used for the pilot. Probably the most, one of the primary pollutants of concern is what's called total suspended solids, or TSS. So the leftmost column here shows you what the influent concentration of TSS for each of the events that we ran to the pilot. Here's the effluent, then here's the percent removal. One of the goals that was specified by EPA for this unit, for it to meet the performance criteria, was 30 milligrams per liter of total suspended solids over a five-event running average. And what you see here, the first four events, of course, you didn't have enough for a running average. So at the fifth event, you start to see these running averages, effluent total suspended solids was well below, these are all well below 30 milligram per liter that was specified by EPA. So after having adopted this technology to additional locations, we developed an alternative 8, which is a combination of storage and then treatment with these CMDF units. So this is sort of us commically blow this up a little bit of what the new system configuration will look like. We'll note that there are cloth media disc filters here in the southeast quadrant, the northeast quadrant, and the Kennedy North Pump Station, and also at the treatment plant. And here is a 33 million gallon basin that currently exists across the street. So I want to focus on how this technology would function at the treatment plant for just a moment. So this is how cloth media disc filters would operate a treatment plant in what we call a dual wet weather treatment configuration. In dry weather, all of the flow from the treatment plant would be screened, go through primary clarification, secondary or cell der�portation, such as remove biological, break down biological matter, or clarification, and then finally through the cloth media disc filters to polish the effluent further, or going to disinfect, through disinfection and discharging to the receiving stream. In wet weather... In wet weather, that flow which exceeds the capacity of the main plant would bypass it and go directly to the cloth media disc filters for pollutant capture and removal, which would then, and it could also bypass, it could bypass either upstream or downstream of primary clarification. And finally, the collected solids that, through that backwash process, would then be sent back to the head of the plant for final removal and disposal. So this schematic kind of shows numerically what this would look like in our recommended alternative. There's the 33 million gallon storage basin across it. So all the flow comes in to a main pump station here, what's called Columbia Pump Station. The first 68 million gallons per day or MGA flow would go through the main plant. A flow in excess of that would bypass the main plant and go directly to the cloth media disc filters, 79 MGA of that. This total of 144 MGA would go through disinfection before it would be discharged to the receiving stream. I'd also like to point out that increasing plant capacity this much means that that 33 million gallon basin, the frequency of over discharge from that basin would only be once per typical year as required by EPA, and we'd be able to drain it or dewater it in one day. I also want to talk a little bit about what cloth media disc filters would look like in the south, in the remote location, the southeast location in lieu of a storage basin. So in dry weather, all of the flow sent would go just directly to the treatment plant for treatment, and the, the CMDF unit would just be idle, waiting for a storm. When rain hits, a portion of the wet, a portion of the wet weather flow would be diverted to the cloth media disc filters. That effluent then be disinfected before being discharged to the receiving stream. Finally, the collected solids that are backwashed, the concentrated solids would be sent back to the interceptor sewer and onto the treatment plant for final removal and disposal. So this is important to note. What, how does this really benefit? I mean, what, what effect are we having in terms of reducing combined sewer overflows? I'd like to point out, prior to any CSO control, our model shows that Hammond would discharge on aver, during a typical year on average of 2.5 billion gallons of combined sewer overflow. All of that would be virtually eliminated with this recommended plan. The, the combination of the basin across the street and increasing plant capacity with CMDF would remove over half of what is currently, or what was, had been current discharge as combined sewer overflow. That base, the remote CMDF in the southeast would capture an additional 19% of the annual average combined sewer overflow. The separation projects that Mike mentioned would remove another 19%. And finally, a CMDF in the northeast would remove another 5%. So the only real discharge that remains is 1% of what had previously been discharged to the river as CSO. And even that, that would overflow from the basin across the street, and even that would receive what is the equivalent of primary treatment, so it wouldn't really be pure CSO. So almost all of the pollutants that currently go to the river as, or had on the river as combined sewer overflow would be sent, captured, and sent to the plant for treatment.
So I want to briefly summarize the selected plan elements and the status. So as I've said earlier, we divided HSD into four quadrants. And HSD started work on the first quadrant. This is where a lot of the industry is, the plant here is located in the first quadrant. So as Steve mentioned, this, there's our, the CSO basin across the street has already been constructed. When you come in today, you might have seen some construction going on, that, that's the headworks project that is currently being built. And then in the future, CMDFs will be added and some wastewater treatment plant improvements. So that was kind of the first priority. The second priority was the southeast quadrant, and that's going to involve some sewer separations, a diversion, the CMDFs that Steve just talked about. And they'll need some screens, and there's a small project to upgrade south side pump station capacity. The third would be the southwest, and that would just be sewer separation, everything would be separated in that area. And then the last would be the north, the northeast, and that would be also CMDF facility and screens. So just want to talk about what the CSO basin across the street has already done. Prior to that basin being built in an average year, 172 times, there were overflows from Columbia, Johnson, and Seoul. Since that basin's put in, all, all three of those outfalls are discharged to the basin, and then there's just one outfall overflowing the basin, and there's been an average of four overflows a year. So that basin took Hammond from 172 a year to four, so it's been a very big success. Now, just talk briefly about the current status of the long-term control plan, and this is just kind of a summary. So in 2011, we were doing the system characterization, and at the end of that, we had a public hearing. And then, you know, from 2012 to like 2015, we were doing alternative analysis, and that's when we submitted the, the 2015 report. We continue to negotiate with EPA after the 2015 report that resulted in the update report of March 1st of 2018. And then, based on comments from that report, EPA asked us to do the pilot testing, and based on the pilot testing, we came up with the alternative eight, which we just discussed. And we're having the public hearing today on that. What's next? So in the past, we've received, any public comments we've received, we've incorporated into the long-term control plan. We submit the long-term control plan, we've already done it a couple times. The regulators review, review it, and, you know, we, we respond to their comments, and now we're in the planning implementation stage. As a stage gets constructed, so for instance, when the plant, when the basin got constructed across the street, we had to do a post-construction compliance monitoring plan. And if the, if the basin or if a component doesn't act as it was designed, it could be necessary to update the plan. So once EPA approves this plan, there would be some construction. When that construction is completed, it will be required to do a PCCMP, and if it passes it, fine. If it doesn't, it's possible the plan may need to be updated at some future date. There's more info available on the, on the city's webpage, hammondsd.com. And at this point, we'd open it up to any questions or comments. Thank you.